Good evening. The May 20th, 2021 meeting of the Anarundel County Council is now reconvened. The purpose of this meeting is to hear testimony on the proposed FY '22 County General and Board of Education budget. Before we start the meeting, if Ms. Jing Dai is here, we would like to give her a citation for being named Anarundel County Teacher of the Year. But she may not enjoy this yet, so we may just have to tell her. Okay. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
I want to begin with the auditor of district. Ms. Lacy.
Present.
Ms. Pickard.
Present.
Mr. Volkey.
Present.
Mr. Friski.
Eric.
Ms. Diebler.
Present.
Ms. Rodbien.
Present.
Ms. Hare.
Present.
Madam Chair, all council are present this evening.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the titles of the budget bills for the benefit of our members of the public.
Bill number 3221, Annuals Budget and Appropriations Ordinance of Anarundel County. Bill number 3321, An ordinance concerning Tax levies, Special Community Benefit Districts, Shore Erosion Control Districts, and Waterways Improvement Districts. Bill number 3421, An ordinance concerning Tax levies, Arundel Gateway Special Taxing District. Bill number 3521, An ordinance concerning Tax levies, Arundel Mills Special Taxing District. Bill number 3621, An ordinance concerning Tax levies, Dorchester Special Taxing District. Bill number 3721, An ordinance concerning Tax levies, Farmington Village Special Taxing District. Bill number 3821, An ordinance concerning Tax levies, National Business Park Special Taxing District. Bill number 3921, An ordinance concerning Tax levies, National Business Park North Special Taxing District. Bill number 4021, An ordinance concerning Tax levies, Two Rivers Special Taxing District. Bill number 4121, An ordinance concerning Tax levies, Village South at Wall Chapel Special Taxing District. Bill number 4221, An ordinance concerning Finance, Taxation, and Budget, Arts Council of Anarundel County Special Revenue Fund, Annapolis and Anarundel County Conference and Visitors Bureau Special Revenue Fund. Bill number 4321, An ordinance concerning Public Works, Solid Waste Collection, Solid Waste Service Charge, Solid Waste Landfill and Facility Delivery Fees. Bill number 4421, An ordinance concerning Property Tax and Semi-Annual Payment Service Charge.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. We will begin the hearing with several individuals who are going to make a series of brief statements on the budget, and I will introduce them each as one after the other. First is Chris Trumbauer, Budget Officer for Anarundel County.
Madam Chair, members of the county council, for the record, I am Chris Trumbauer, Budget Officer for Anarundel County. Thank you for the opportunity to give a brief overview of County Executive Pittman's proposed budget for fiscal year 2022. The proposed budget before you represents a welcome departure from last year when the county reduced revenue estimates and scaled back critical programs and initiatives in order to account for the economic impacts of the COVID-19 pandemic. Fortunately, last year's conservative budgeting maneuvers have positioned the county very well as we emerge from the COVID economy. Therefore, County Executive Pittman has characterized this budget as getting back on track. Due largely to the federal assistance bills that void the national economy and our strong employment base, the county's local income tax revenue exceeded FY '21 budget estimates by $41 million. Also, a surprisingly robust real estate market resulted in higher than anticipated recordation and transfer tax revenue, which came in $25 million, higher than budgeted. Combined with the cost savings across county government, this results in a healthy county fund balance of more than $114 million. This year's total general fund budget is $1,876,518,000, an increase of $157.3 million, or 9.1% from the adopted budget for FY '21. However, it is important to keep in mind that $114.2 million of this increase is the fund balance mentioned before. Excluding that fund balance, that's an increase of 80.8 million, or 4.8% in recurring revenue year over year. Comparing FY '22 budget to the revised '21 budget estimates reduces the year-over-year increase in recurring funding to $32.9 million, or 1.9%. The proposed budget keeps local income tax rates unchanged at 2.81%, the fourth lowest rate in Maryland in fiscal year '21. The proposed budget also adheres to the county's property tax revenue cap, and the property tax rate declines slightly to 93.3 cents per $100 of assessed value, the seventh lowest rate in Maryland. The FY '22 budget makes several investments to secure long-term fiscal stability. The proposed budget includes an $11 million contribution to the Revenue Reserve Fund, also known as the rainy day fund. This will result in an estimated balance of $95.7 million at the end of fiscal year 2022. The budget also fully funds the annual contribution to our other post-employment benefits fund, known as OPEV, and makes an additional one-time payment of $20 million. This is akin to paying down the principal of your home mortgage and will reduce our future required annual payments. The budget reduces the county's structural deficit from $24.7 million to $19.9 million, and County Executive Pittman is committed to continuing to reduce it over the coming years. Finally, the county lowered our estimate of what our pension investments will earn in the future from 7.5% to 7.0%. This will result in a larger annual contribution and less dependence on the whims of the stock market, meaning that county employees and retirees can count on their future benefits, which they earned during their employment, being there when they need it. The proposed budget includes $784 million for the Board of Education, a $34.5 million increase from last year, and $15.7 million more than the state-received maintenance of effort level. Adding in debt service, school health, and school safety results in total school funding of $896 million, or 50.8% of the county operating budget. This year, the budget prioritizes the compensation package for our educators with a step increase and a 1% cost of living increase for all units. County Executive Pittman's budget also makes an additional $8 million investment in catch-up steps for those Board of Education employees who did not receive their contractual steps in prior years. For those eligible, this comes in the form of one full back step and a second mid-year back step. In addition, the proposed budget funds a total of 53 new school positions: 15 positions for special education and school counseling, six for English language acquisition, 2.5 for the new Triple E program in the Glen Burnie Cluster, an additional teacher for Cat North, and 26.4 new teacher positions to begin the 11th grade at Crofton High School. Anarundel Community College, recently ranked #1 in the nation by Forbes Magazine, will receive $46.4 million in county funding, an increase of $1 million over last year. This will allow them to keep tuition rates unchanged this year. The library system will receive $24.9 million of general fund support, an increase of $315,000 compared to last year. For public safety and our first responders, the proposed budget of $379.1 million adds six new positions in the police department and two each in the fire and sheriff departments. The budget includes continued funding to begin the body warm camera program and increases the capacity of our crisis intervention teams. The proposed budget uses $3.8 million of fund balance for a one-time boost to the fire apparatus budget, allowing the fire department to purchase much-needed replacement tanker trucks, ambulances, and other vital equipment needs. Other notable new initiatives in the budget include three new planners for the Office of Planning and Zoning to staff up the office as it prepares to implement Plan 2040 and begin the region plans. Three new positions are also proposed to create a stormwater strike team in the Office of Inspections and Permits. And the budget adds a new park ranger for Lake Waterford and two new part-time rangers to oversee and enhance the county's growing natural trails network. For the county enterprise funds, water and race water utility fees remain unchanged, as does the county stormwater fee. The proposed budget includes an increase in the annual solid waste fee from $298 to $341, which is about $3.50 per month. This is the first rate increase since 2013. With respect to the fiscal year '22 capital budget, the $375.8 million of expenditures includes $200 million for the Board of Education projects, which is 53.2% of the total capital budget. Specific projects included in this year's capital budget for the Board of Education: $4.8 million for Old Mill Middle School South, $75.8 million for Old Mill West High School, $23.7 million for Porterfield Elementary, $20.2 million for Hillsmere Elementary, $29.9 million for Rippling Woods Elementary, and $9.6 million for West County Elementary. Additionally, the proposed budget includes $2.3 million for athletic stadium improvements, $20.6 million for building systemic and maintenance backlog projects, $4.2 million for all-day pre-K and pre-K classroom space, $2 million for roof replacement, and $300,000 for school playgrounds. Notable new county projects in the County Executive's proposed capital budget include $3.3 million for the Arnold Senior Center renovation and expansion, $250,000 to establish a forest conservation mitigation fund, $500,000 to begin a new fire station in Jessup, $4.5 million to plan and acquire new land for a new fire training academy, $376,000 to begin the new Oakton Library Community Park, $2.5 million for the Jug Bay Environmental Education Center, and $1.2 million to begin the Quiet Waters Park rehabilitation. The budget also includes $8.2 million for continued progress on the WBNA South Shore and Broadneck Trails, and $34.8 million of new funding for the West County Storm Center beginning fiscal year '24. In closing, I thank you for this opportunity to present the overview tonight. The county executive, the entire budget team, look forward to working with the county council and the auditor as we work together to strike a budget to meet the priority needs of our county residents. Copies of the entire budget, including budget highlights, are available on the Budget Office website, which can be found at www.aacounty.gov. Thank you, and good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Trumbauer. I am informed that Ms. Dai has joined us, and so I'd like to just pause momentarily and present her this citation. Read it very quickly. This county council citation is presented to Jing Dai with our congratulations in recognition of her dedicated public service to the students of Anarundel County, and more specifically Mead High School, on being chosen as Anarundel County's Teacher of the Year. The Anarundel County Council thanks you for your hard work with the county students and congratulate you on this tremendous achievement. Our next speaker is Ms. Melissa Ellis, President, Board of Education of Anarundel County.
Chairman Lacy, Vice Chairman Rodbien, and members of the council, it's wonderful to see you here in person this evening. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to address you here. Since I have had the opportunity to speak before you in the last couple of weeks, I will be brief with my remarks this evening and just leave you with a few reminders. I know you have much to consider when it comes to allocating Anarundel County's taxpayer dollars, and there are many priorities to support the important services the community counts on every day. It is without question that providing its citizens the opportunity for high-quality education is one of the most important things a society can do. To neglect to do so would be even more costly to the community. Not only does this mean that we need well-trained educators and robust curriculum, it also means we need to provide the additional supports many of our students need to succeed, and we need to pay our teachers competitively to retain experience in our classrooms. So I'm here this evening to remind you of the following critical needs in our school system. Please bring equity to our staff by making up for missed steps that have caused a pay gap for half of our workforce. Do everything you can to support the mental health of our students by bringing in more school counselors and mental health professionals in order to bring in, bring the workload of these key positions to a more manageable level. And please fund the requested positions in special education and English language acquisition to keep up with the growing need to support these students. Please remember that these priorities are even greater this year due to the challenges and resulting stress to our students and teachers of adjusting to virtual learning, students dealing with months of social disconnectedness, and teachers trying their hardest to keep students engaged in achieving academic gains in these incredibly difficult circumstances. The priorities I mentioned directly address what is needed to move our school system, our students, forward beyond this horrible pandemic. Never has it been more important to show our teachers they are valued, and let me remind you that it may be, that it may be too difficult to address the pay gap among our staff in any future budgets as our funding becomes more restricted to mandates imposed by the blueprint for Maryland's future. We need our experienced staff. Our students need our experienced teachers. There is finally a light at the end of the dark coronavirus tunnel. As we continue to work hard to get our students back in the classroom and repair the many effects of school closures, it is important to reflect on the lessons learned and to look for the positive. We must all be grateful that the economic outlook is not nearly as grim as predicted and feel confident in investing in our future, our children. Thank you again. Please don't hesitate to reach out, and if you have questions, or if you have questions as you consider this budget, I'm here to work with you for our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ellis. Next is Dr. Georgia Lotto, Superintendent, Board of Education of Anarundel County. Good evening.
Chairwoman Lacy, Vice Chair Rodbien, and members of the county council. Thank you for the work that you are doing on behalf of Anarundel County, and most importantly, for our students and employees. As I said previously to you, COVID-19 has muddied the county's financial picture for more than a year and left us in a place where very difficult budgetary decisions have had to be made. I appreciate the efforts of the county executive and his team, who have found ways to fund our school system at a level that exceeds maintenance of effort. I'm thankful that the pay issues involving all of our employees continue to be addressed. Our team has been nothing short of awesome throughout this pandemic. Our teachers, food service workers, technology team, custodians, secretaries, administrators, and central office staff have been both relentless and tireless in their efforts to help all of our children. Should you be able to find additional funding on the operating side of this budget, I urge you to consider adding back some of the positions we requested but were not funded. We expected the vast majority of those students who left us in the pandemic to return, and I am concerned that without positions to address that return, we will see class sizes rise again. We've made a lot of progress in this area over the last few years, and none of us wants to see that progress thwarted. We also are seeing, as Mrs. Ellis stated, and as no surprise to you, increasing social and emotional needs of our students. To the extent that you can, I ask you to examine funding, examine funding additional school counselors, psychologists, and social workers. On the capital side of the budget, I again applaud the county executive and his team for the plan they have laid out. Should you find additional funding, I ask you to consider fully funding the security-related upgrades, our maintenance backlog, and athletic stadium upkeep categories. As always, I thank you for your partnership and for the time you spend working with us on behalf of our students. We are truly better together and are always open to more conversations with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Lotto. Next speaker is Mr. Russell Leoni, President, Teachers Association of Anarundel County.
Good evening, Chair Lacy, Vice Chair Rodbien, and Councilman. Thank you for allowing us to speak tonight. My name is Russell Leoni. I'm an elementary school teacher and president of Teachers Association of Anarundel County, and tonight I'm here to represent the voices of over 6,400 members who work every day to serve our students and our communities. I'm grateful for this opportunity to speak on behalf of the members tonight to advocate for full funding of this budget proposed by County Executive Pittman. Under the circumstances that we've navigated this year, we are very satisfied with the budget recommendations. Over the last three years, Board of Education, this council, and County Executive Pittman have held strong in their commitment to resolve this experience credit issue for our educators. Our members have made this a top priority, and we appreciate all you have done to address their concerns. We look forward to a future where the balance within the wage scale is not something that continues to hamper us as we plan for longer-term contracts and real opportunities to collectively improve the educational experience for our students. So with a sense of urgency, we can't afford to miss this opportunity to fix this now. As the pandemic has taught us, the challenges ahead are unpredictable, and with the directives coming from the blueprint, as you've heard Ms. Ellis reference, next year, we don't know what FY '23 will hold. So why don't you consider funding this budget? Tac asks the council to also focus on some other things. We believe creative solutions are needed to address the problems that have impacted our salaries for decades, and so with this budget, we encourage the county council and the Board of Education to allow some flexibility on how we apply the money contained in the budget. As I testified before you last week, I shared our vision of pairing the $5.5 million proposed to the 1% COLA with funding for allocated for back steps because we're working to resolve this experience credit imbalance this year. We were also delighted to hear Board of Education President Melissa Ellis sharing in her testimony that this is urgent now in repairing the experience credit issue. With this budget proposal, this issue, which impacts 3,401 Unit 1 educators, can be resolved in FY '22, allowing us to enter the blueprint era, unencumbered by past challenges. So we've taken steps toward resolving this issue and changing the personnel and professional lives for many educators already, and when I say we've taken steps, I mean all of us have, and I appreciate that. And we're very thankful that this budget proposes the amount of money that it would take to match educators' steps with their years of experience. So we are again glad this budget attempts to address the fact that our educators are an essential part of our community and should be shown the respect and dignity of their pay. Our priority is working to fix the experience credit as quickly as possible and also continuing dialogue on how surplus funding could be used. We'll allow educators to fully focus on the most important task of offering our students a world-class public education that they rightfully deserve and allows us to do that without the distraction of inequitable pay. So once again, I thank you for showing our educators that their time, their service, and their dedication to their students is worthy of respect and dignity. Thank you again for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Leoni. Next, we have Ms. Edith Pickin, President, Association of Educational Leaders.
My name again is Edith Pickin, and I am currently President of AEL, the Association of Educational Leaders, which represents all Unit 2 employees. These employees are school-based administrators, instructional coordinators, and special assistants for safe and orderly schools. AEL would like to make it perfectly clear that it supports the highest level of funding for public schools. It is the most sacred form of investment that can be made for the future. Unfortunately, AEL does struggle to support a proposed budget regarding the compensation being offered to Unit 2 employees that was not a product of legally required good-faith negotiations. For your information, the compensation package offered to Unit 2 was a product of a superintendent's proposal or a placeholder and automated in some small part by the Board of Education. That proposal has not changed. AEL has questioned and challenged the board to negotiate this proposal as required, but as of this date, to no avail. Unlike Unit 6, employees comprise, for the most part, of the superintendent's executive staff, Unit 2 is required to negotiate for its compensation package. By contrast, the executive staff, who have experienced extremely significant pay increases over the past three years, has received the same at the recommendation of the superintendent and the generosity of the board. Unit 2 employees are not so privileged. Please do not construe AEL's appearance on behalf of Unit 2 employees as a waiver of the required negotiation process and acceptance of a budget that was not constructed or submitted as a product of the same. To accept this submitted budget with an unnegotiated agreement regarding compensation for Unit 2 employees would subvert the requirements of the law on fair dealing. It is evident that those of us comprising Unit 2 are not valued for the extremely difficult work that we do each and every day, not to mention that we are on-call 24/7, seven days a week, which certainly is not language in the contract. The board's current proposal shared with AEL includes paying Unit 2 for unfunded steps that were previously earned. Simply put, paying those for what was agreed to and underfunded in the past is not a pay raise, particularly regarding the ongoing increases in workload. Where is the compensation for that? Ms. Shatline pointed out on May 17th that up until September, she was reviewing the number of teachers leading the county for quote-unquote greener pastures. That same is holding true for those in the administrative ranks. We are told to take care of ourselves and our own mental well-being when the truth is we can't because of the ongoing demands being made while committed to working with our students and their families well after contractual hours. For that, there definitely needs to be a review of the compensation being placed before us. A budget that includes compensation placeholders that are prepared, submitted for approval before negotiations are concluded is not a negotiated budget. It is not a product of any negotiating process that requires bylaw, good-faith bargaining. Waiting on the superintendent's proposed budget with this placeholder line item is an unacceptable mechanism to subvert the bargaining process. The first compensation offer becomes the board's only offer and ultimately its best and final offer. Bargaining typically does not begin, let alone resolve itself, in any tentative agreement until the Board of Education comes to the table to discuss the matter after the superintendent's budget has been submitted. The result of this process, the superintendent's placeholder item becomes the "take it or leave it" offer. No true good-faith bargaining occurs. It pretends to be that, but it only shows as a calendar event in order to say negotiating occurred, when no negotiating occurred at all. At the table, we are told what to accept and treated with disrespect and condescending manner, as though we should be grateful for what we were offered. As we know, the most significant cost in the educational budget is employee compensation. It is the allocation of and the equitable distribution of those funds that are of equal, if not most important, part of the bargaining process. With the passing of or accepting of any budget request, it is critical to view the compensation portion in context. I'm referencing the relationship of the compensation between the various groups of employees. The important question here is, does the compensation being offered take into consideration the demands of the job, the supervision that's required? Is there a proper and fair differential between those that are supervised and those that are providing the supervision? I'm referring to school-based personnel and the different responsibilities of those in the schoolhouse. What is important to note, the allocation of pay between the different employee units contemplates and produces a pay differential. Over the last several years, the last three more specifically, a continued erosion in that differential for Unit 2 employees has occurred as it relates to Units 5 and 6. This issue needs to be assessed and addressed. Unit 2 now consists of 343 employees, predominantly school-based administrators with a few positions at the board. Between the 2018-2019 year and our current 2020-2021, overall, Unit 2 has received approximately a 6% salary increase. On the other hand, Unit 5, consisting of 400 40 employees, overall has received approximately between 10% and 14% increases in salary, with 49 of those employees receiving a 20% or greater increase in salary, resulting in some instances of job title reclassification and the creation of new positions. This equates to those individuals potentially receiving anywhere between $7,000 and $10,000 or greater pay increases. Unit 6, consisting of 55 employees overall, in the same time period, has received anywhere between 15% to 18%, with approximately six members receiving between 18% and 20% increases in salary, resulting in similar or greater pay increases. I urge you to look closely at this budget line category and to compare it to the percentage of actual pay increase paid to all the other represented employees. The fact that smaller number of employees, we are talking about Unit 6, the superintendent's board-based upper echelon, is noted, receive the largest aggregate amount. The smallest portion of employee compensation package being provided does not tell the whole story. Clearly, the amount offered to each unit, excuse me, to each individual in Unit 6 in real dollars far exceeds any amount offered in real dollars to any Unit 2 employee. It continues to erode the differential and continues to unfairly compensate one group of already highly-paid personnel. It continues to erode the differential and continues to unfairly compensate one group of already highly-paid personnel at the expense of another. The amounts mentioned above were submitted as proof of these excesses in salary advances for Unit Six and Units Five as compared to Unit Two to the board's internal auditor at his request. It has cleared this path of excessive compensation at the expense of Unit Two and other employee groups is continuing. In the review of salary differentials, it will be important to identify growth, changes in position titles, and the creation of new positions allowing for increases in salaries for Units Five and Six. Units One and Two are not able to have title reclassifications. There is no resulting potential for increased compensation. Aside from compensation, Unit Six employees receive in large part the same benefits that Unit Two receives on the negotiated agreement. So in closing, a fully funded budget is essential for the maintenance of a first-class school system. A budget that recognizes the hard work and dedication of its employees as a justified reward for the sacrifices which are made daily. Increased compensation is welcomed and deserved. Compensation that should be reexamined, though those that are involved in the daily and direct delivery of education and support of antique students at the school level should be given a higher and well-deserved priority. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pickin. Next, we have Mr. Skip Old, CEO, Anarongo County Public Blackberry.
Good evening, Council Chair Lacy, Vice Chair Roddian, Council Persons Volkey, Kruski, Pickard, Hare, and Feaver, and all residents of Anarongo County. Thank you for the opportunity to address you in person this evening. It is really great to see you in person. And I have changed my remarks somewhat to reflect some new announcements that I want to make tonight. First of all, I really want to thank you for the strong support of libraries that you have given us the past two years, from funding discoveries to increasing the materials budget to bringing Glenn Burney and Millersville Libraries into the capital program. You have been a tremendously important partner as we work to improve our library system. You are moving us toward completing the early years of a library renaissance that began about seven or eight years ago and is taking root with this current council and administration. So I want to thank you for enabling the rebirth of libraries and library services, programs, and resources throughout our county. This is the one-hundredth year of service to people, to the people of our county. And with our sixteen libraries, four hundred staff, and a great collection of print, audiovisual, and digital resources, we provide a robust array of services and programs. Over the past year, we reinvented our public libraries several times. Many of our new ways of doing business will carry forward forever. This is we anticipate bringing back services that we had to put on hiatus this past year. On March thirteenth of last year, we switched to online service and we started purchasing lots more eBooks and we started doing virtual storytimes and other virtual programs that very next week. I'm just so proud of our library system and our staff because we continued to provide service throughout the pandemic. By June first, we brought all staff back to the buildings. We created and opened curbside service, I should say, we brought them back. We also created a whole telework policy, so we had a hybrid of telework. About eighty percent of our staff were back in the buildings. We have alternated, okay, so we opened curbside service on June the eighth and we have alternated between in-person appointments and being fully open throughout the course of the year based on public health metrics. On April twelfth, we reopened libraries for walk-in service. And we are going to open our meeting rooms and in-person programs by September the seventh, the day after Labor Day. And at that time, we will extend our hours open from the current seven PM to nine PM Monday through Thursday. So I would like to invite everyone in our community to visit your libraries. We're thrilled to be welcoming you back as God willing, we move beyond the pandemic, which I call the damn-demic. Among many innovations over the past year, the one that we believe will have the greatest impact on the future of all Anarongo County residents is the elimination of overdue fines. That happened in recent months and we're really pleased with that. In your work session a couple of weeks ago, I talked with you about supplemental budget requests. And we really appreciate that the County Executive has proposed funding several of our requests, including one of the four positions that we're asking for. And these four positions may be our most important requests to ensure the long-term health and stability of our operations. So I want to talk with you about just one. In previous discussions, I've talked about three of the positions that were not recommended. But really, I want to focus on one. Over, over the past year or two or three, really, we have been slammed with shipping and receiving books throughout our library system. So we really need to get the full-time materials-receiving clerk. Currently, we have one great employee who is throwing heart and soul into the work, but he is part-time. And we really need the full-time position. I believe it's in the cost range of around sixty-two thousand dollars. And I know that would involve negotiation back and forth with the Budget Office and with the County Executive, but if there's any way to find that, that would be just awesome. Turning to the capital budget, we are thrilled to see funding in the CIP proposal for both Glenn Burney and Millersville Libraries. These projects will complete our current facilities master plan and will complete the first phase of the renaissance of this library system. We expect to expand our mobile outreach program with the vehicle that is part of the funding proposal of the Maryland Live Local Development Council. We appreciate your valuable support as we take this journey together. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Old. Okay, now, we would like to hear from members of the public on the budget. Each speaker will be limited to two minutes. A Spanish interpreter is available here tonight for anyone who needs us. And if you do need an interpreter, please see Ms. Corbin Wall in front. So I'll start with those who have signed up online in advance, and I apologize if I mispronounce anyone's name. I will call each person individually. Please come up to the podium when you are called and state your name and address for the record. First is Susie Skyler.
Hello, I'm Susie Skyler and I reside at seven one eight Andover Road in Lynn, Illinois, Maryland. And I'm addressing the Andover Road project. I'm speaking out on behalf of the residents dramatically affected by four to no sightlines when the calling out of drivers to turn onto Andover Road. And this project began January seventh, two thousand and fourteen, and since then, the problem has only intensified. The DPW stated that the roads needed to be updated with widening the roads, grading the properties, installing sidewalks. Two studies have already been done to show that eighty-five percent of the traffic is exceeding the speed limit of thirty miles per hour by fifty miles per hour or more. Because of the speeding issues, the residents affected have been taking additional precautions to pull out of the drive-throughs, meaning very big hesitations to pull out because you cannot see the oncoming traffic coming down the curved hill, as well as putting the window down, no matter what the weather is, to listen for vehicles, which is also challenging since vehicles, especially electric ones, have become much quieter, making it more difficult to turn onto Andover Road. When drivers are coming down and doing the speed limit, they have time to slow down when people are pulling out. But myself, as well as others, have gotten nicked several times when people are speeding down the roads. The DPW has had several meetings with residents in July twenty-eighteen. The engineering consulting company that surveyed Andover Road documented the sightline problems and made recommendations, including grading properties, moving utility poles, installing sidewalks, and replacing the bridge culvert over the watershed. In August of twenty-nineteen, I was told there was funding for grading the properties under the safety budget and BGE homes were in the budget but colonial pipe lines were not. The possibility of comming pumps was also proposed to reduce the speeding, and this would take three to four months. Since that time, surveys have been done and road markers have been placed only to fade without any work being done. Even though the pandemic occurred in twenty-twenty, I still saw outside work taking place, but nothing on Andover Road as far as any improvements or changes. Being the person in charge of the project in twenty-fourteen, I was a board member of the LSIA.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, but your time expired. When did that happen?
Okay, well, I appreciate your listening, but I just wanted to say that it's been very disappointing. I've been working on this for seven years and the DPW even called this the major safety issue, so it just needs to be addressed this year. Thank you.
Next on the list is Richard Otten.
Hello, thank you. My name is Richard Otten. I'm an instructor at Anarongo Community College. I'm testifying in support of fully funding the administration of Anarongo Community College. I do associate from the perspective of what we call adjunct instructors and who's employed to teach part-time at the school. And like many people, I teach at multiple schools, which can become busy. I've been an adjunct instructor at ACC since two thousand and four, and I've never had an opportunity to apply for a promotion full-time in my area of expertise because, like other institutions, ACC's administration exploits the labor of people like me to demonstrate its fiscal responsibility to people like you. And I'm talking with the exception, you can be able to call that a question of opinion, but really, if, say, the school hired has ten, I might assign those courses to three or four or more adjunct, three thousand dollars a course or less, hiring two full-time at a beginning salary of fifty-five K plus benefits. It's a huge saving, always, but to do that, and it's very often highly due. Currently, I earn two thousand seven hundred ninety-three dollars for teaching a three-credit course in what I understand to be the proposed budget. It includes fully funding the lecture three stage that ACC's adjunct faculty affairs committee has been having for about six years, which has been included in the budget of the council. And very basically, three thousand and twenty-one dollars if I successfully apply to be a member of that first cohort promoted. If you're making about three thousand dollars a course, college would prevent you to teach as many as eleven courses a year, but that's if you're really fortunate and you have supervisors like mine who tell me that they would hire me to full-time if they could. And third, you're really enough to live in this county without being a part of what you have here. And then you probably have to, if you teach in your board class, after you pay the ECA, you wind up paying back the money that you've earned, and then you're in the hole next year. It's not really a lot to do without extra care.
Thank you, sir. All right, well, we got new batteries over there. The next person is Corinne Emerson. If you would kindly come down to this microphone. Corinne Emerson? All right, I will try, we'll put her at the end of the list and try and relieve her. Sebastian Serrano?
Good evening, members of the County Council. My name is Sebastian Serrano of four twenty-four Pamela Road, Glenn Burney, Maryland. Thank you for the opportunity to speak here tonight. I've taught at Onamblis High School for seven years. While I started well after the two thousand and eight recession, my salary still felt the effects. I've frozen staff in two thousand and fifteen, and a year without a cost of living adjustment has led to more sacrifices than my written contract advertised. But I'm not here to talk about me. In the spring of two thousand and nineteen, colleagues who were in years five through nine of teaching entering the recession had missed between eighty and a hundred and ten thousand dollars of cumulative pay due to frozen steps and lack of colas. Just two years later, the situation is so much worse. By delaying step recovery, my colleagues continue to miss crucial, expected dollars. Passing the scheduled step increase, makeup step for two thousand and twelve and thirteen, and mid-year makeup step for two thousand and fifteen and sixteen will at least stop increasing most of the damage, but we must understand the nature of that damage. Even with this plan, by the end of spring two thousand and twenty-two, those same colleagues who were missing between eighty and a hundred and ten thousand dollars will be missing between one hundred and six and a hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars. For many, that can be the majority portion of a mortgage, college funds for the children, multiple cars with maintenance, family members can go to work. That money can be circulating the local economy to grow in Rundle. Over a hundred thousand dollars of lost income is not the sacrifice anybody talks about when someone wants to teach in America. It is an injustice to tell the people who transformed the nature of their profession to maintain Anarundal's ability to educate in the pandemic that we all make sacrifices so tough luck. My colleagues deserve a sense of financial security. Passing this proposal makes financial sense. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Serrano. Ms. Sandra German?
Hi, my name is Sandra German. I live at three ten Broadway Avenue, Glenn Burney. I am the president of the Greater Fernland Community Association, and I'm speaking on behalf of my members. We have really concerns over your zoning inspections and permits. We've been addressing these issues since Mr. Pittman came down and took the tour with our community. We have certain businesses that are running without certificates of use, opening their doors, putting people in this community in jeopardy. They have no liability, the liability is going to fall on the county because we've been reporting these businesses. We have another one, certificate of use four thirteen, says it's a Ferndale shell. Maryland Department of the Environment, three years ago, removed those tanks and shell shut down. So we would like to know how the county has issued a permit for a gas station known as Shell that's been gone for three years. We also just had one that opened up on seventy-one, seventy-seven, and seventy-one ninety-five. The one at seventy-one ninety-five, if you pull down there, there's over twenty untagged vehicles. The back, they are stacked on top of each other. This is not looking out for the safety, health, and well-being of the community. This is a nuisance, and I swear it is making the property values in this area go down. If I would pull up into this area and seen two junkyards, I don't think I would buy in here either. Thank you for the chance to speak.
Thank you, Ms. German. Next is Amy Lahey.
Good evening, members of the County Council, and thank you for allowing the public to finally come in person to speak to you all. My name is Amy Lahey. I live in Silver Park, Maryland. So this past, I want to talk about the budget. These past fourteen months have been very trying, to say the least. Many people have lost their jobs, businesses have failed in record numbers, and even more people have suffered from emotional, mental, and physical health problems. Despite the financial hardships put on families, the County Executive has once again put forth a budget that continues to add a record level of new positions and creates new offices. For example, it adds four new long-term planning positions when, for the past year, while on the Citizens Advisory Committee for Plan Twenty-Forty, I heard many times from the OPZ Deputy Director that they could not even fill the vacant positions they have. This budget takes money from the hard-working people to pay five hundred thousand dollars for more new positions in a resiliency office, obligating us to pay for a new pet project without even knowing what that is. While the County Executive has said he's not increasing taxes in this budget, the assessable tax rate is being set above the constant yield in order to increase revenue another eight million dollars. Fees for trash collection are set to go up fourteen percent in one year, even after trash collection had previously been reduced to one day a week years ago. This budget has an almost ten percent overall growth, while those who pay for it will only see a projected income growth of two percent. Please have more concern and respect for those who pay taxes for county operations by passing a budget that sends a message to the County Executive to live within his means, as we all must do. The budgets in the past three years by this council have passed, in the past three years by this council have grown county expenses by eighteen percent, setting us up for either massive cuts or massive tax increases when things slow down. That stimulus money from the federal government this past year is going to stop coming, coming one day soon. And if the council approves this budget, Anarongo County residents will be forced to pay big time in the end, long after this council and this County Executive are gone. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lahey. Next is Stephen Wadi.
My name is Stephen Wadi.
Can you put the mic up closer so?
Thank you. I haven't done that before in a school auditorium.
I haven't done that before in a school auditorium. Good evening, everyone. It's good to see you all in person yet again, not in the boxes. My name is Stephen Waddy. I'm here on behalf of President Jack Ossing with the NAACP. The purpose of this testimony is to outline some of the budget priorities for Andorl County from an NAACP perspective. The recommendations are based on principles of ending racism in all its forms. For many years, under several Republican administrations here in the county, culture war was waged in the county, and the interests of the black community were ignored in budget after budget. Civil rights organizations complained to no avail since there was no political will to end the disparities in employment, education, healthcare, housing, and policing that were inflicted upon the black community, many of which you all heard about over the past year as they've exacerbated under the pandemic. So, in this budget, we have seen several things that were very good. We talked with our membership, and they do support the reinstatement of the step increases for teachers and custodial staff, primarily for, you know, the custodial staff and the food service workers that may have missed their step increases as well. Members also mentioned the need to increase funding for black teacher and administrative recruitment and retention. There were concerns from members that live in Surinac Park that there's a lack of black teachers, and apparently they said that students shouldn't only see people of color cooking food and cleaning toilets in their schools. We recommended the hiring and retention of black teachers and administrators, fostering of inclusive cultures, eliminating discipline disparities, and suspensions and arrests, and eliminating the opportunity gap, all those things. Be linked to the salary of the principal in each school, and we have a four-page document for you all, which I'll be sending to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Waddy. Next is John Wong.
Good evening, Chairman, County Council. I'm John Wong, 343 Colbray Court, Pasadena. I'm the president of Ferndale Volunteer Fire Company. I'm here to speak on behalf of the budget for the fire department. The fire chief has claimed budget concerns to justify cutting maintenance funding for the volunteer-owned fire apparatus. Another recent policy announced by the fire chief on April 16 proposed to be necessary to control costs by eliminating duplication of resources. The measure specifically indicated that the fire department would no longer provide maintenance for equipment they determined to be unneeded. The first victim of this policy was the Ferndale Volunteer Fire Company, which was planning to replace a firing engine that the county deemed not necessary and redlined it last year due to age. The value of a station having a second-equipped and ready engine are many and include. While it sounds good on paper to eliminate duplicated resources, one must consider unintended consequences. The Andorl County Fire Department lacks operational depth and maintains little or no equipped reserve apparatus. Operational depth is provided by volunteer-owned and predominantly volunteer-staffed apparatus. This topic was addressed in some detail with the current administration's transition team as a concern. Volunteer-owned and staffed apparatus provide transfer or filling companies needed to staff their station or other stations while their equipment or crews are occupied in extended emergency operations and/or training sessions. Volunteer-owned and operated apparatus provide for the availability of multiple apparatus response during times of increased need such as storms, hurricanes, civil unrest, and other emergency events. Apparates purchased by the volunteer fire companies provide a tremendous cost saving to the county and the taxpayers as all purchase funds are raised through fundraising activities and/or grants, thereby relieving the county of any expense. The result of denying maintenance for the proposed new engine in Ferndale is that they will no longer be able to, or eligible, to receive a low-interest loan or money for maintenance costs. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Wong. Next is Lisa Erismith.
Good evening. It's truly good to see you all in person. I've been watching you in, online, you know, all year. My name is Lisa Erismith. I live in Hanover, Maryland, and I'm the chair of the Public Water Access Committee. I'm here to talk about recommendations for the 268,000 continuing new water access fund that's in the budget every year. We have four projects to recommend for that, two pocket change projects, and two that are more substantial capital projects. This fund produced the acclaimed Pomport Farm Park and the much-beloved Downs Park upon the Vodkens in prior years. First, we're recommending $1,000 to go into Weinberg Park for a kayak launch. Weinberg Park was acquired in the mid-2000s, it's 235 acres. A small parking lot was created in 2015. It's ready for another small investment. Second, we're recommending a $500 investment for a kayak and SUV launch at Shoggoor Farm Park. It's about 185 acres. It was acquired in 1985, and it was open in, I believe, 2015. No, yeah, 2015 initially. The financial projects are more substantial, and one is Beechwood Park. Beechwood Park is actually a pocket change project back in 2015. The county put about $1,000 into clearing the existing water access lane that was blocked by fallen trees, and it's ready for more improvements at this point. And the final is Valentine Creek in District Four, which is on the upper region of Severn and has been entirely untouched so far, no investment whatsoever. It was initially recommended to us pre-acquisition as a potential boat ramp site. It's not a boat ramp site, it is perhaps a kayak launch, bird-watching picnic area investment. So, thank you for your attention to this request.
Thank you, Ms. Erismith. Next is Robert Rose.
Thank you, members of the council. Thank you. Good evening. My name is Robert Rose. I reside at 7961 Inkeeper Drive in Severn. I'm president of the Andorl County Volunteer Firefighters Association. I'm here to speak about the fire department budget. Current fire department administration has instituted numerous policies that are detrimental to the viability of volunteer fire service community, and in particular to the health and safety of volunteers in Andorl County. And in several cases, the lack of adequate budget funds have been cited as justification for these. Additional funding is needed for the fire training academy, both for the planned future construction of the proposed new center, but also provide training classes that the current administration has mandated for volunteers while offering little or no support to volunteers to obtain training now, or in several cases, even taking measures to block volunteers from obtaining required training from other sources. Failure to comply with new arbitrarily imposed training requirements will likely result in termination of response eligibility for a number of volunteers and slow training for new members. They have often cited a lack of space and resources, and cited that as reasons for delaying or postponing the typical summer volunteer firefighter class, the high school cadet program, and others. The fire chief has claimed the lack of funds that are available to provide a second set of PPE, personal protective equipment, or the old timers call it turnout gear, for volunteers. Although the chief recently announced that all uniform personnel have been issued a second set of gear, this is actually not correct as no volunteers have received the gear. The second set of gear is most needed to reduce the exposure of our members to cancer-causing agents that become trapped in the gear after a fire. The gear can be cleaned, but is then out of service and unavailable for a period of time, taking the gear and the member out of service for emergency responses. I'd like to add quickly to comments about Ferndale, reducing maintenance for volunteer apparatus is short-sighted. I need to look at the numbers recently to see what's going on with volunteer fire service in Andorl County. In December 2018, there were 712 certified volunteers. Today, there are only 450. I'd like to also ask for the council to urge renewal of the property tax deduction for public safety, employees, and volunteers. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Rose. Next is Joseph Larson.
Good evening. Good evening, council members. My name is Joseph Larson. I reside at 7771 Kidwell Drive in Hanover, Harmons Woods Community. I am the second vice president of the Andorl County Volunteer Firefighters Association, and I'm also the chair for the Recruitment and Retention Committee. I'd like to speak on two topics, if I can, if my time will allow, but my first topic is the high school cadet program, which allows high school juniors and seniors to train in the applied technologies curriculum with the high school to become firefighters and EMS clinicians. This also will allow the volunteer system to acquire 30 at a minimum, up to probably 60 per year if we max out our efforts, new responders at no-cost salary lives to the county. What this will do is it will allow these members or these students to pursue a career in the fire service and EMS clinician field. Upon graduation with no further training, these students will be able to acquire jobs in the federal fire service or with a contract fire department, and then also give them the ability to join other jurisdictions as well. So we encourage funding for this, being that the fire department cited that there was no funding available and limited resources to fund this. My other topic is mandated background checks for our administrative members and auxiliary members, which is unfunded by the department, and that cost will be levied to the volunteer departments. This will put an undue financial strain on those departments as those background checks can cost upwards of $50 per person. The only other thing to do is to absorb that from the county, for the, for the county, I'm sorry, for the company, or pass that on to the new member as a background check as part of their application fee. So this would potentially limit the candidates that we have available, either based on the company's limiting that, or the fact that potential volunteers will say, "I don't want to pay $50 a person."
Thank you.
I thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Larson. Next is Paul Arcand.
Evening, council. I'm Paul Arcand, and I'm the pastor at Lighthouse Baptist Church, and I didn't bring my Bible to preach to you tonight, but I do have some of my notes in it, and I do thank you for the opportunity. Considering a $1.9 billion budget, I just wanted to speak. My wife and I are lifelong Maryland residents, and we've invested literally all of our personal income, all of our energy, and our life into helping hurting people in Andorl County. And I love each and every one of you. I pray for you daily. My main purpose for standing tonight is to just represent people that I know you were. You were people that used to sit in the audience. You got passionate about something and came and got involved, and I thank you for your service. But I just, I'm here to, our government, I feel like our government spoke to us as churches back during the pandemic last year, and so we are awoken. The Bible tells us the book of Romans 13 that it's time to awake, and the time of salvation is at hand. And I think through this pandemic, there's a lot of sleepy churches, and I'd admit it that ours probably was too. We've been helping people for years, but sometimes you don't pay attention till you lose something. And so I just, I'm here to remind you. I email you often to tell you that I'm praying for you, that I pray for your families, I care about you, but I'm also urging you that there's a lot more people like me. People are busy and they don't always speak, but when we get through this budget, and I know you're not, but I'm going to say it like this, but don't just rubber stamp this thing. Go ahead and put the work in. That's why you're here tonight, to hear this, and I appreciate that. But I'm here to tell you that I care about you, but it's important what we're doing, and I know you know that.
Thank you. I should say pastor, Pastor Arcand. Next is Susan Dever.
Good evening. My name is Sue Dever. I reside at 8248 Severn Court in Pasadena. I grew up in Andorl County, and I've lived in Maryland my entire life. I love this county and I love our state. For seniors living on a fixed budget, though, it's getting harder and harder to live here. I have friends and family who have moved out of the state because they could no longer afford the house that they had bought 30 or 40 years ago. It is my understanding that there is a 14% increase in the trash fee in this year's budget alone. Over the past three years, there's been a combined growth in the county budget of 18%. 9% is in this year's budget alone, also the rain tax. As a senior living on a fixed income, it's getting harder and harder to live here. I would love to have received an 18% increase in my pension over the last three years, but my pension does not have a colon in it. The pandemic has also hurt a lot of families. We're starting to see inflation creep in. Gas prices are going up because national leaders have chosen to stop the building of a pipeline that made our country energy independent for the first time in 70 years. The major pipeline on East Coast was temporarily shut down, and we'll feel the ripple effect of that for a long while. Gasoline increases, prices are going up, will be passed on to the American citizen when we buy all kinds of goods, groceries, clothes, items for our homes. All families have to live on a budget. At least that's what my husband and I have done for the past 40 years. I believe the county should operate on a more fiscally restrained budget, because what you're doing is hurting all families when you increase spending. Please review the budget again and see where you can possibly decrease some spending. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dever. And next is Faith Loudon.
Good evening. Thank you for having us, and thank you for what you do. But, a 14% increase in trash collection? What happened? Did we all make more trash? Did we run out of where to put the trash? $500,000, more money for resilience authority. What is resilience authority? I wonder how many people know what that is? And why aren't there more people here? Nobody knows about this meeting. I don't know what you do to advertise it, but we don't ever know about it. We were just lucky that someone told us. So I'm hoping that you'll figure out the next time to let the people know in a bigger and better way. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Loudon. And did we have Corinne Emerson join us? Does not appear so. Okay, those are all the folks who signed up in advance. If there's anyone here who did not sign up and wishes to speak, please come up to the microphone now. Your crickets, just like we are sometimes on screen. Nobody's getting, nobody's moving up, so, okay. The public hearing on the proposed FY22 budget is now closed. Is there any other business to be brought before the county council at this time? Seeing and hearing none, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion for adjourn, Allison Hicker.
May I have a second?
Second, council, first, you.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. The county council is adjourned until 9:00 AM on Wednesday, June 2, 2021. Remember to check the county website for important information and updates on our meetings. And before I say goodnight, thank you very much to the police officers and everyone who came and helped set up this venue for us to be able to have this hearing tonight, our first in 14 months, so thank you. And our AV folks, of course. And with that, I'd say goodnight.